I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I go ahead and get a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. So we'll move on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here with us that would like to come up and speak to the board? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioner reports that we have today?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would like to put on the agenda the ambulance district program. I think Commissioner Aaron's, Commissioner Gibbon, and myself attended the public meeting that was held in Lenox. And it has some pretty severe implications as to taxing purposes and what the role of the county commission will be. And I think we need to air that and have a good, long discussion on that issue. Secondly, remind everybody, achievement days are going on and the big barbecue is on the 4th. And I would like to publicly wish my condolences on the part of the passing of his mother to Commissioner Poppins.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I did attend last night the celebration of the 100 year anniversary of the Hudson Library in the Hudson City Park last night. And nice gathering, nice meal. And so that's pretty exciting, 100 years in existence. Also, I did travel down what I would call Spur Avenue past Hudson Ethanol Plant. And I know most of that work has been done on that road. It's very impressive. I think that people can be, in the agricultural business that do patronage there in business, can be very happy on what we've done to make sure that that is tolerable for traffic, truck traffic especially.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. If not, we'll move on to regular business. Got a public hearing to consider an application to acquire a manufacturing and dispensary medical marijuana license for Dalton Grimias, Dakota Herb. Who's gonna tee that off for us?
This is a public hearing to consider an application to acquire a manufacturing and dispensary medical marijuana license for Dalton Grimias of Dakota Herb LLC to operate outside of the municipality on the property legally described as Mueller's Lot 4, Southeast Quarter, 19150, AKA parcel number 15019A400. And this, the applicant is here.
I see that.
If you want to ask questions.
All right. Dalton, you wanna come up?
Sure.
You're just moving, you're moving one license to another location, correct?
Correct. Removing the retail part of the business out of our last approved facility into this one.
That's right on 106?
Yep.
Okay.
It's a lot more favorable for retail traffic.
Sure, sure. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Dalton, do you know when you'll go into operation?
The plan is for the actual manufacturing facility or the cultivation facility that we already approved on to be ready in that January 1 timeframe. COVID and supply chain problems have caused lots of issues. Electrical panels have been our major problem. As soon as we have product to sell, that'd probably be in that February timeframe, then we would look to open up this facility.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here that has anything that they'd like to say in favor of the application besides Mr. Grimias? Anybody opposed?
We do not have any mechanism to transfer from one site to the other. We have, we can, you can issue a new license.
Right. That's what this will be, correct?
Okay. Yes, but you can't transfer.
Do we need to then cancel the other license at the same time, or?
It would depend on what the applicant wants. I mean, we can always cancel the license, but right now, in the ordinance, there is not.
Just granting a license.
Yep.
Okay.
Bill, because this is, because you can't transfer, but because I'm hearing the word "transfer" thrown around and you have to do a new one, has the applicant filed a new application along with the fee required?
Yes.
Yes.
Otherwise, they wouldn't.
So all those things are?
They're all done.
Fine. And this word "transfer" is probably being thrown around loosely?
And since this is a brand-new ordinance and kind of a new process, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on the terminology. The license is for a location. And so the next one is for another location. And the ordinance specifically says they're not transferable. So I'm just clarifying.
Right. So I guess question, another question I have for the applicant then is, is do you agree with termination of the existing license?
Dalton, can you come up and speak into the microphone, please?
I would agree to termination of the dispensary license on the other facility. I would like to keep the manufacturing license for the other facility as well. Plan is to have a commercial kitchen in the new facility and then the extract lab, which isn't allowed to share the same space as a retail or dispensary space in the other facility.
Thank you.
All right. So can I get a motion to approve the application?
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the application and contingent upon the dispensary application being terminated or dispensary license.
I don't think that that's the way we can do this today.
If he, we give a license that allows at that location that you can do all four. So it's kind of a general license. They usually specify which one they're going to do. So I mean, if you were, I guess if you wished to do that with the license, you can, but we generally interpret it as kind of a general license. If you get one, they usually specify what they're going to do. But I don't, the way the ordinance is written, I don't know necessarily that you have to specify. It's a general, if you can do it in that location, then for zoning purposes, you could do all four.
Yeah, I'm moving.
If we bring it back to you, we can make adjustments if you'd like to the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm moving to approve the application, just contingent upon what the applicant said about terminating the dispensary license.
Does that make sense, Dalton?
Yes, because I do believe in your ordinance, there's also a disclaimer that more than, or one person can't hold more than one licenses that, I think I've seen. So that's where I was under the assumption that we would give up our retail, our dispensary license to make this all work.
All right.
And that's why we gotta do it that way.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thanks, Dalton.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to item two on our agenda. Got an application for Northwest Energy for County Natural Gas Franchise Renewal. Was Terry gonna present that, or Bill, do you know?
We placed Terry's name on it since it has to do with the right-of-way.
Okay.
He is aware of it, but there's an individual here from the utility entity to speak and present.
All right. You wanna come on up? Just state your name and address and tell us what you'd like us to know.
Sure. Good morning. My name is Robert Gamm. I'm the real estate representative for Northwestern Energy in South Dakota and Nebraska. I am here today to renew our gas franchise in Lincoln County, State of South Dakota, through a statute cited in the resolution granted the county authority to grant permission for utilities to lay facilities, in this case, natural gas, in public right-of-way. So this would renew our gas franchise, which turns out every 20 years in each and every county in South Dakota. And what we're renewing today would be for existing utilities. I did speak with the highway superintendent, so any new facilities would be permitted through the highway department to lay in, on highways or in road right-of-way under county jurisdiction.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gamm?
Could you enlighten us? Do you know, are there guidelines in which public utilities placed in right-of-ways have to meet minimum standards for depths and those types of things? Are there standards like that?
Yes, there's national standards for laying natural gas pipeline for utilities.
Do you know what those standards are?
I do not. I'm not an engineer, so. They're generally laid 36 inches to 60 inches deep, depending on what exists in that right-of-way for other utilities.
I'll vote, I'll motion to approve it, but I will, I do have a comment if we have a second.
All right. Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
This is my commentary. The public has inundated right-of-ways with utilities to a point where I don't know that when it was initially thought it was a great place to put utilities. I will tell you, it is not. There unfortunately prohibits road maintenance and stuff, especially township roads and things like that. So I hope in the future, there's a cooperation with property owners to make sure that they can maintain their property, because where that sits in the public right-of-way is still privately owned areas. And inevitably, there's gonna be conflict, because some's gonna get hit, because it's in those areas and then, you know, there's a conflict between property maintaining those utilities, as well as property maintaining those right-of-way, which include drainage ditches. So I hope that the entities are very understanding when things may go awry, not because they weren't trying to be careful, but because they're not, there are just too many utilities in these right-of-ways nowadays. Commenting, thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, I would second your comments, because at the intersection of Cliff and Willow in Harrisburg, construction on the roundabout that's gonna go in there is being pushed back another year because of primarily extensive amount of utilities that have to be moved. And they couldn't do it all in the same year. And the cost of being able to do that were so cost prohibitive that the city needed to push the timeline back another year. And these utilities want to get paid to move their things when these municipalities want to improve their intersections now. So the cost of this is becoming cost prohibitive, and these utilities need to start taking that into consideration.
May I comment on that?
Of course.
We are guests in public right-of-way, so if there is a highway project, I just finished up a project up by Millbank on a state highway, it is incumbent on the utilities to pay, to replace or remove their facilities.
Thank you for that. Got a motion and a second. Can I call the roll, Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Gamm.
Thank you.
Move on to item three on our agenda. Commissioner Schmidt, you gonna tee that up?
We have, last week, we had a representative from Canton here who represents Civil War Days. And why don't you reiterate just briefly and your ask, what you would want?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner, for hearing me out again. Jeff Tanner, Canton Chamber of Commerce, Canton Development Corp. Just a big event coming to Canton here, not this weekend, but the following, the 13th and 14th, the Saturday and Sunday. And I came before the commission last week, I believe it was. And we just, we gave another commercial that's being played right now on some of the local stations, told you folks a little bit about our event here in Canton, in terms of what we were thinking for numbers. Little bit, little bit unknown right now, but we expect a pretty good crowd weather contingent on all these events. But we were at an event in Carthage, Missouri, to kind of, to check out, to see kind of how things would run down there. And I can tell you, I think I reiterate, I'll reiterate what I think I said at the last commission meeting, it rained four inches between Friday night and Saturday. And it didn't stop 1,600 people from showing up on that Saturday for that event. But it's a huge opportunity, I think, for the Canton and the Canton area in Lincoln County, in terms of the economics. But also, and what I focused on, you know, at the last commission meeting too, is we have over 100 Civil War veterans in Lincoln County that are buried throughout the county. We've got, I've got the archives on that information too, if anyone is interested. But it'd just be, it's just a way to recognize them, preserve our history, obviously the economic boom, which I mentioned. And with that, we just respectfully requested if the county would be willing to make a contribution, a sponsorship to our event. And the amount that we had, our ask was $2,500. And with that, I'd certainly open up, kind of try to flush out any questions at all you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I do have a comment about it.
Go ahead.
First of all, as someone who spent some time in education, teaching history, I think this is a very good event, and I think it's something that's very educational. I did have an opportunity to see one of these events up in Sisseton during their celebration that they have each June. And it's quite impressive. I think that it would be something that would probably bring a lot of people into town and economic development, so on and so forth. However, I also am concerned about a precedent being set here too. I know for myself, I represent six municipalities in my district, and I know they all do some very good things. And I can see if we start contributing to this, we will probably have others that will be here asking for similar things to come. And, you know, I don't know if our budget can continue to support all these smaller items that we maybe need to look at. So as much as I'd love to support this and see this happen, I know that, I'm sure we might be setting a precedent that I don't know if we want to go down.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other comments or discussion?
How's your funding coming? I mean, what would the funds be used for?
Sure, sure. So then, thank you for that question, Commissioner Poppins. I was asked that question at the last meeting that-
I apologize for my absence.
No, no. I'm sorry for your loss. So what I communicated with the board was that portion, so we had received in-kind contribution from the city itself of Canton. Obviously, we're, there's financial contributions made annually to the Chamber of Commerce itself from the city, so I need to make sure I mention that. But we receive in-kind contributions in terms of public safety and some of the organization in that way, making sure the utilities are taking care of Portage John, so on and so forth. And in that same vein, in that same spirit, we plan to use the contribution the county would make, or potentially make to us for those purposes. So, and, you know, we can certainly provide any sort of documentation that would be asked for in that regard. So we want to obviously be true to our word, and we don't mind being held accountable for that either, so.
Is this a one-time, or is this hoped to be an annual event?
We don't have, hope for it to be an annual event, Commissioner, but we do hope for it to be a bi-annual event.
Bi-annual.
There's a real big push behind the scenes right now to bring back the Canton Car Show in the community. And if that pushes, the way we vision it at the chamber is, we would run the two events bi- and one stagger them, those two events annually. Yeah.
Jeff, these Civil War reenactments are incredible history-telling devices. And there's obviously, as you said, 100 Civil War veterans who passed away and buried in the cemetery here, and so there's a strong connection to the local community, albeit probably forgotten by the masses. And this kind of event will have the opportunity to, you know, give people a good history lesson, especially the kids. I think it'll be a great event for the city of Canton. I think it will result in some economic development, and hopefully it becomes a self-sustaining effort. And hopefully, I remember as a kid going to the Canton Car Show, at least I think I did, and that was a pretty good time. What I will say is this, though, is the city of Canton has come at us with quite a number of requests. They want a pool built, and they want their water pipes fixed, and they want some infrastructure built out. And that's just the city of Canton, right? There's others who are asking for more money as well. And yeah, there's a lot of municipalities out there, and it will set a precedent. Whether the board adheres to the precedent or not, I have no idea. But, and my understanding also is the county sheriff's department is gonna be supporting this, right? So the county is making a in-kind contribution in the sense of keeping law and order during, and probably providing some traffic management and coordination there as well. So there's gonna be some man hours spent on that. And perhaps that's one of the better ways that the county can help support this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Follow-up question?
We don't have, I don't have a motion on.
Commissioner, before we're that, Commissioner Poppins, I remember previously, we had a similar request. And you had a motion that we shared similar amounts with all of our communities, if you remember that.
I have done that. My question was going to be, I mean, this is not strictly a celebration of people from Canton that served in the Civil War, correct?
This is county-wide, as far as we're concerned. All of our research has been that to promote the county. Obviously, it's in Canton, so there's that part of it.
That is that. So that is, as I agree with Commissioner Gibbon, that we have to be extremely sensitive in a tight monetary situation. I do support what this is hopefully gonna present to the community as a whole of all of Lincoln County. And that is why I'm gonna offer the motion to support and offer the $2,500. It is a county-wide celebration of those that have sacrificed, as I have lost my mother and the sacrifices that she did to raise me. And I want to mention that we all lose people, and we lose them sadly, but these people sacrifice their lives for one cause or another in a fight of our own people, which I think a lot of our younger generations have no clue about. And I think it's very important that our community gets stronger because of that. So that is why, Madam Chair, I do offer the motion to support the $2,500.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Pop, our Commissioner Poppins' motion, for the said reason. The other part, I did want to comment, Jeff, for you being part of the Chamber of Commerce. The city of Canton cannot continually think that the county is their safe, their, their repository to fix these things. We have, as Commissioner Gibbon has said, we have many other communities that we have to do like for. So I second that only for the reason what Commissioner Poppins said, is that it is a historic situation, and our veterans come from all over the county. Had this just been a celebration for the car show, and you wanted a subsidy, I'd have voted no, because I think that's a responsibility of the community. I also think it's a responsibility of Canton to fix their own pool and to take care of their own infrastructure. I don't think that's part of the Lincoln County taxpayers from one end or the other to do that. But on that, I vote, I second the motion.
Thank you. You know, I look at this as an opportunity for economic development, and I think, you know, as a one-time deal here to see what actually happens at this event, and hopefully that it will be self-sustaining into the future. I can support it this one time. I just, I don't want that precedent necessarily to be set, that this is gonna be some ongoing thing into the future, because we certainly can't guarantee that. So I would like to see what comes of your efforts and have some contribution towards that, so.
I agree, Madam Chair. And again, if it's a county-wide thing, what I saw up at Fort Sisseton was very impressive. It really was. So, and that was about three years ago.
May I comment, Madam Chair?
Uh, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for your support. And I probably was a failure on my part to offer some clarity there. The intent is for this event to be self-sustaining. I will not offer that up again. And that's been made clear on my part as the, I guess, the head, the leader of the chamber, if this thing can't support itself, then we won't. We want it to be prosperous, so we're giving it everything we can this go. And we think it will be. But we won't, I won't, in good, in just what my beliefs echo a lot of what's being set up there, I won't come before you again with this, the same request, so.
And thank you for that. Why don't we go ahead and call the roll, then? Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish you the best of luck. Move on to item four on our agenda. Anybody got numbers on the propane? Is anybody presenting on that?
I believe there were three quotes, and this was the lowest quote, if I recall. Is that right, Madam Auditor?
What was the lowest quote? Do you have it there, Jim?
The requested resolution is to accept the lowest bid from CHS and authorize the chair to execute their propane sales contract from 10/1/2022 through 4/30/2022 for 3,500 gallons of propane at $1.9690 per gallon.
And that's from CHS?
Correct.
We deserve a motion to approve.
I'll so move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
For the reason that I believe we could maybe invest into a propane tank and store that, I'm gonna vote no.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Do you wanna, I don't think that's a bad idea. Do you wanna talk to-
I can talk to John if you would like.
To John about looking into that?
The last number that I heard on propane was about a buck fifty-two. So if one could purchase their own tanks and store it, but I'll speak with John.
All right.
It's not a bad deal to go ahead and contract, but maybe moving forward, we'll look at additional stories.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to item five on our agenda. Board action to approve a courtroom lease. Bill, are you gonna present that?
It is the same lease as last year. It's $100,000 for the use of one, the equivalent of one courtroom in Minnehaw County for civil cases. The email that accompanied it strongly suggested, if not outright stated, this was the last time they would do this, that they would not do another lease. They are out of space. They are pushing people out of locations in the courthouse. And so we will not be able to do this a third year.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to authorize you to sign the contract and with the terms.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
This became the hot seat. I don't know how we not do it, gentlemen, so I'm gonna vote yes. I don't like it, but I don't, I think we're a rock and hard spot.
We don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice. So, yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner-
[inaudible]
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wish you the best of luck. Move on to item four on our agenda. Anybody got numbers on the propane? Is anybody presenting on that?
I believe there were three quotes, and this was the lowest quote, if I recall. Is that right, Madam Auditor?
What was the lowest quote?
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion.
Bill, you can take the, wipe sweat off your brow.
Yeah, I don't think any of, I don't think any of us like it, but-
I, I hope this is really a catalyst, if we didn't have one before, to say, we need to get this figured out, everyone, thank you.
Then we had a tabled item, item six. I got a motion to untable the item, or perhaps I don't need to-
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Table.
Sean, we call the roll.
Who was second on that?
Uh, Aaron's.
Thank you. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Uh, I, Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I thank you, everyone, for allowing me to have this tabled, so I had an opportunity to visit with the, the little bidder, and spoke with him, although I couldn't because of conflict in person, did a telephone quasi-interview. I do believe that he can fulfill the requirements of the contract and would feel comfortable to move forward with it, so.
Anything to add, Bill?
We were, for the motion, we're asking to authorize State Street's Office of Senator into negotiations to sign the contract, and we would like Commissioner Poppins and Gibbons to be part of this negotiation, so we can make sure that we have a contract that reflects actually what's going on in the management.
So, as far as the agenda item itself, it says award airport management RFP.
So I would just suggest awarding it to him with the addition that we would, you authorize the State Street's Office of Senator into negotiations for a contract with them.
I'll move to award subject to contract negotiations and a formal contract being presented to the commission.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Aaron's. Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Bill, do we need an executive session on anything?
Yes.
Which sections?
Employment and legal.
All right, so, Sub 3 and Sub 4, 125, 2, Sub 3 and Sub 4? Or do we need one as well?
Why don't we do one as well?
All right, and SDCL 125, 2, Sub 1?
Move for executive session under that, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We're in executive session.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.